Good evening. I now call the Board of Education Special Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, June 24th, 2024? The Board of Education Special Meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
I move to approve the agenda for Monday, June 24th, 2024. The Board of Education Special Meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Rontree.
Aye.
Director Kaminsky.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
And President Garlock.
Aye. We have two public meeting, public hearings tonight for the sale of a piece of property located at 2630 B Avenue Northeast, which is the Arthur Elementary location, and a sale of piece of property 1201 Maplewood Drive Northeast, which is the Garfield location. Secretary, Bart Secretary Reestrom, have we received any written correspondence regarding the sale of the piece of property at 2630 B Avenue Northeast, also known as Arthur?
We have not.
Have there been requests to address the board this evening regarding this published hearing?
No.
Thank you. The sale of the piece of property 2630 B Avenue Northeast, also known as Arthur, public hearing is officially closed. Board Secretary Reestrom, have we received any written correspondence regarding the sale of the piece of property at 1201 Maplewood Drive Northeast, also known as Garfield?
We have. We've received two correspondences, and the Board of Directors have received them in their board packet.
Have there been requests to address the board this evening regarding the published hearing?
Yes, we have 10 speakers.
Thank you. With 10 speakers this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Excuse me. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Board Secretary Reestrom will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. The time is yours to use and may not be yielded to another speaker. If you have submitted a request to address the board and choose to refrain from speaking, in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between board members and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in attendance. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speakers that the board cannot address personnel and student matters. The board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving those concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speakers to state their name and address when called to the podium. Ryan, please call our first speaker.
Wendy Hartman.
Hi, and the last will be first. My name is Wendy Hartman. I live on the northeast side of Cedar Rapids. I've been a resident for about 30 years. My husband was born in Cedar Rapids. He went to Arthur, Franklin, and Washington. I currently live about one block away from Arthur Elementary. Overall, I'm concerned about the communication from the Cedar Rapids School Board. Information about the sale of Garfield, I feel, was eaked out bit by bit to the public through the Gazette, and I'm wondering why there's such a cloak of secrecy regarding the sale, the details, the cost, and the bidding process for the sale of Garfield. Cedar Rapids School Board wants public support for its endeavors, but it has not been very public about the proceedings at Garfield. Thank you.
Thank you. Our second speaker is Kelly McMahon.
Kelly McMahon, 5508 Dossel Drive, southwest Cedar Rapids, 52404. I was expecting you to speak so soon. So, I thought about coming all day today, and the more and more I saw the news coverage and thought about things, as a former Milwaukee Public School teacher, I could not not come tonight. I so appreciate the plans that the school district has put forth in regards to the sale of Arthur and of Garfield. I think it's really exciting that the sale of Garfield will provide some hands-on learning opportunities for our students with renovate, helping renovative buildings to be turned into apartments and other wonderful entities. When I served on the, helped with the Facilities Committee, I even had a conversation with then Superintendent Dr. Bush, or Superintendent Normie Bush, about the things that we faced in Milwaukee because of a voucher program. And it's bad enough that as a taxpayer, I'm having to support another system of schools that are taking money out of the general fund. And so, my concerns were the fact, like, what's happening right now, is that maybe we need to have policy that says that who we would sell our buildings to and who we would not. It was never done at that time because we didn't think, oh, we'd actually get vouchers. But this is my concern, what's happening here today. And right now, you have a plan in place, the process was done as you have to follow by the current law that's in place, and I think it's the right move. Let's sell our buildings to something that's going to not only benefit the community, but are also going to allow a learning opportunities for our students, because that is our top priority, providing absolute amazing learning opportunities for our students. And so, I want to thank you for the proposal for Garfield to provide that, and also the proposal for selling Arthur to the Arts Academy, because we know how important the arts are, so, and our students will be able to use those. So, thank you so very much, and, yeah, thank you for this foresight in doing what's best for our students and for our communities.
Thank you. Danny Levi? Levy?
It's Danny Levy, 1351 Twenty First Avenue Southwest. I graduated from Washington, I went to McKinley, and I also went to Grantwood as well, another school that is gonna be closed down in a couple of years, as we do know. I'm not saying that these schools are safe to be in, I'm not gonna say that these schools are particularly structurally sound. Arthur and Garfield both needed to have a bunch of improvements made to them, simply because they are getting older. They were built in like 1914 or something like that. And that's also to say that my main gripe with the way that the district has handled the selling of Garfield solely boils down to the fact that it was quiet. It was very, very quiet, and nobody really knows, like, how fast that happened. Suddenly, the schools were up for sale, suddenly this one guy bought Garfield, and now all of a sudden, they're gonna be apartments. Thirty to forty units where the district only gets to have two of them, which then raises the question to me is, how much are these apartments gonna be costing every single month? How, like, what kind of people are gonna be able to live in these apartments? For the two that are gonna be offered up to the district, it said on the article from the Gazette, that the two apartments can be offered up to people affiliated with the district, which opens up a whole new level of nuances to these types of things. I'm not gonna say that Cedar Rapids doesn't need any more apartments. Arguably, I don't think we do, especially the high-end ones and a bunch of historical places where people might think that, oh, this is a great idea, we should be jacking up the prices for these. There are family homes there, and building more apartments in that area will more or less jack up the prices on those homes. And it's just gonna create more and more problems for the community, where the district is promising to help us solve them, or help create new opportunities for these students. I don't understand how a historical building will be able to be a community thing, a community prospect, a pillar in our community, if it's just gonna be used for living. I think that these places should have been offered up to more people, more people that would have been able to transform it into something that our community could actually use. I struggle with the idea that our district is here to help our community if truly and honestly, we're just gonna be selling them out to private companies and people that won't even, in the long run, give back to them. What are those two apartments offered up to us going to do in 10 years? Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Bonnet?
My name is Mark Bonnet. I'm at 1429 Wildwood Drive, which is just to the north of Garfield. And my concern with this Garfield being converted over to thirty to forty apartments is the increase in traffic. If this is done, there's gonna be a minimum of thirty, maybe eighty additional cars a day, every day, that's going to be, going to the apartment complex. And since I'm on Wildwood Drive, and the way Maplewood works is people fly up Maplewood and cut through Wildwood Drive down our street. And so, I have great concern, and if you have that many people, it's gonna be all hours of the day that people are coming up and down our street again. Not many people follow the speed limit either, as they come flying over Maplewood onto Wildwood. And while our neighborhood is an older neighborhood, there are younger families moving in, and there are young kids in the neighborhood. And so, I also have the concern that as people come flying down the street, opportunity for a bad situation in terms of an accident could happen. So, I guess my concern is, what would be done, or is, in, 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 in the thought of converting this school into thirty to forty apartments, has there been any study of a traffic control, or what, how does that additional traffic impact the neighbors around us? So, with that, I say thank you, and please take that under consideration.
Thank you. Steve Emerson?
Steve Emerson, 38, 88 Lowes Bombers Road. I'm just here to give additional information on what my offer to the school district was. It really came out of a brainstorming session of what is the best use for these schools, and I have converted two other Cedar Rapids schools and two apartments after the 08 flood. That was the old school admin building on Second Avenue, and then also the school warehouse over on L C G Avenue. My goal is to provide additional workforce housing. The state's identified a need for about 20,000 additional houses in the state of Iowa, and Cedar Rapids has been struggling to replace the housing need because of the derecho. There's been derecho grants from the state that clearly just can't be fulfilled because of cost of construction. So, workforce housing, market rate housing, is what I do. I don't do low-income housing on an architect. I've designed it, but I don't wanna own life tech properties. My offer to the school district has many layers. The press got an initial number, that was it. The two apartments are a need that the school district has. They have traveling students that come, or teachers, sorry, that come from other universities that need a place provided by the school. So, to have two set aside for them makes sense. If you're gonna have apartments, let's do that. Those are also the ones that I specifically wanna have the, the building trade students work on, is the two that would be there and see them from start to finish, not just swing a hammer over here and do this, or whatever. I wanted to truly learn, I love that program. The historic preservation, also another layer of my offer, historic preservation is a long process. It'll add about twelve to eighteen week, or months, sorry, to this. So, we won't be able to start construction for a year to eighteen months. During that time, I get to pay the utilities. Chad says it's a nice boiler, I don't believe him. I get to take care of the roof, I get to mow, mow that five acres of lawn, I get to do the snow, I gotta pay insurance, and I get to start paying property taxes, too. So, there's carry costs of probably about a quarter million dollars getting this thing ready, just so I can design it and then build it. So, that's part of the implication on the upfront costs, I'm carrying all that. And again, the partnership with the trades is something that was a school's idea, I love it. This building has challenges. You guys replaced it because there's no way it can comply with the current accessibility codes. It doesn't comply with current building codes, it would never meet energy codes. Fire codes, I think you inherently have to keep up on that, because you have a lot of kids in there, so that's probably okay, but your new schools are gonna be safer. Then, the next layer of that offer is, on those two school district buildings that I did after the flood, I'm paying $150,000 a year in property taxes to the city and the school. So, it pays back over and over and over again. I will continue in curtail. There are not thirty to forty units that will fit in here. There are probably twenty. There are fifteen classrooms in Garfield currently. SHPO, the Historic Preservation Office, will dictate that we have to keep those rooms, those doors, those hallways. So, each of those classrooms will be able to become an apartment. The office area, I would love to partner with a community focus. I met with Young Parent Network, that lower level in the cafeteria will not be large enough for them. Boys and Girls Clubs is already building something. I'd love to partner with somebody like that, and that would also reduce the number of units, because twenty would be the ones taking the entire thing. So, just wanted to give a little clarity, and this, this is an ongoing process, there's gonna be a lot that has to be learned. I've done several of these. I've converted a lot of office buildings to apartments in, using historic tax credits, because nobody's looking for office right now. So, it can be done very successfully, it'll be market rate. It's not going to have a dire impact on that neighborhood. I've spent a lot of time in that neighborhood. Frankly, I like it, I think this will fold in really nicely. I'd love to keep the playground, I know there's probably a liability issue from the school, if they do that or not, we'll find out. And I don't plan on building a ton of townhomes behind it, I'd like to leave the open green space. So, that's a little more detail of what my plans are.
Thank you. Judy Winter?
We live a couple of houses from Garfield, so we're glad to see that something's hopefully gonna be done there. My first thought, when I heard of this potential sale, was two things. How long is it gonna take before people can actually live there? And the other thing, a little red flag went off in my head, the same person was having problems getting something done with the building in Dubuque. It was taking longer than, than it was said. So, that's my concern, how long will it be before, you know, if they run into problems? Maintaining the Browns, I just heard that that shouldn't be a problem. I hope that some kind of alarm system remains. Kids are over there a lot, and it's a great place for kids in the neighborhood to go. They shoot baskets and play on the playground. But also, sometimes there are people around there who wanna cause mischief. Just June 8th, the police were there because an alarm went off. Excuse me, an alarm went off. So, I don't know if, it'd be nice to have a big alarm system like, like is there now. So, how can we ensure a timeline for when things are done? It'd be really nice if he could work with, if this hill goes through, if he could work with the neighbors, at least let us know, kind of how things are going and what we can expect. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
DeChristopher.
DeChristopher, thank you.
Ron DeChristopher, 1301 Maplewood Drive Northeast. And as a taxpayer, and as a neighbor of Garfield, having lived there for 33 years, very concerned about the future of that property. My main concern with what's been announced already publicly is the sale of that property for far less than half of its assessed value. And as I understand it, that assessed value that's on the assessor's website is only for the land, does not even include the building. So, I would expect a wealthy developer to pay at least the assessed value of that property. That's probably my main concern, and secondarily, why there was not, has not been a competitive bidding process to sell the Garfield property, and I think there should be. Those are my two concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Mosey?
I'm Bob Mosey, I live at 5141 Chestnut Ridge Road. I am a member of the Lynn Christian Education Association Board, but I do not speak on their behalf, and my comments are my own. As a property owner and taxpayer in the Cedar Rapids Community School District, I object to the sale of the Garfield Elementary Building to a for-profit developer in a rushed, no-bid deal made behind closed doors. For a school district that is seeking to gain the public's trust through transparency, especially in advance of the physical plant and equipment levy vote, and another shot at the bond referrendum, both of which have a procedural step later on in tonight's agenda, an open bidding process for unwanted CRCSD property to demonstrate fiscal responsibility would definitely be a step in the right direction. As you probably know, there's a law currently on the books in the state of Iowa, State Cent File 2368, that requires real property to be sold by a school district to an educational institution if they are the highest bidder. While that law does not become enforceable until next week, the actions of CRCSD are inconsistent with the intent of that law, and the timing of your no-bid deal with the developer has at least the appearance of being a race against the clock, with the developer possibly even getting a sweeter deal as a result. From my perspective, the ideal outcome would be for a nonprofit educational institution to acquire Garfield so it can continue to serve the Cedar Rapids community in the purpose it was built for, and as is being done with Arthur Elementary. A nonprofit educational institution would care for and maintain not just the physical building and its historical value, but also its character as a place of learning for the next generation, without requiring significant remodeling to replace its insides for use as housing. Regardless of who submits the highest bid, whether a nonprofit educational institution or a for-profit developer, the taxpayers in the Cedar Rapids Community School District deserve a competitive bid process for the disposition of the Garfield Elementary facility. I urge the school board to please reconsider your non-competitive sale of Garfield to this developer, and to vote against this irresponsible deal tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. John Garbs?
Hi, my name's John Garbs, I live at 409 Sheffield Drive since 1996. I too am on the, the board, and all I'm doing is gonna read a, a letter verbatim that was sent to certain board members and the mayor. It was sent to our Director of Development just today, from Cindy Lundin. Dear Mrs. King, I am Cindy Lundin, owner of properties in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, where my family has lived since 1914. I am retired from a long, enriching career with the Cedar Rapids Community School District, and I'm writing to you regarding the public hearing this evening with the sale of Garfield Elementary School. It is likely that I will be unable to attend the hearing, as I already had plans in place before this hearing is called, or on rather short notice. Thus, I hope you, as Director of Development for Isaac Newton Christian Academy, will consider my opinion as expressed here in this letter, and feel free to include my thoughts, which are in support of having Isaac Newton Christian Academy enter a bid on the Garfield property now. I would very much like to see the Isaac Newton Organization own the Garfield buildings and property, as it is important to me to have the site continuing as an educational facility. Being a lifelong taxpayer of Cedar Rapids, I want my money going towards such worthy endeavors as quality schools and other facilities, which encourage education, cultural opportunities, and provide neighborhood and citywide activities to reach our citizens, to enhance worthwhile learning programs. From what I have read recently about the pending sale of Garfield School, I think it would be unfortunate if the price was far below the assessed valuation. And from what I know about Isaac Chris, Isaac Newton Academy, I think that its bid would be sound and fair, and in line with what taxpayers should expect. I was pleased years ago, when Isaac Newton purchased the former Adams Elementary School that we still own and have taken extremely thoughtful care of, educating numerous fine young citizens of our area. And I would love to see this continue, as you would be expanding your campus if you were to purchase the Garfield parcel and buildings. Personally, I am growing Personally, I am growing tired of hearing about the proposed development plans that are unfinished, rely on shaky or uncertain resources, and often result in the destruction of quality structures with high historical value, both monetary and nostalgic. This is happening too often, in my opinion, and those of my numerous friends and colleagues who believe that the development shouldn't be synonymous with demolition. Thus, Mrs. King, I am certainly in hopes that Isaac Newton Christian Academy will bid on the Garfield School property and it will be wisely accepted by the Board of Directors of the Cedar Rapids Community School District so that the school can continue on as a fine educational institution. We strongly feel the same about having the Eastern Iowa Arts Council, a highly positive and worthwhile cultural organization, acquire the Arthur Elementary School buildings and grounds. Our city neighbors strongly need such welcoming quality assets as you both have proven to be steadfast providers thereof in expressing your wishes to expand and continue such fine provision. Sincerely, Cindy Lundin, educator, historian, and author. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy McDonald.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Amy McDonald. I'm here tonight on behalf of Isaac Newton Christian Academy, 1635 Linmar Drive. I am president of the Board of Lynn Christian Education Association, which is the governing body for Isaac Newton Christian Academy. I come before you to express our sincere interest in purchasing the former Garfield Elementary School building. We are excited to make a verbal offer tonight to offer to purchase Garfield Elementary School for $375,000 cash. I also have a written offer that I'm prepared to deliver tonight. This offer is more than double the existing offer we understand that you currently have. By continuing to use the Garfield Elementary School for its original intended use, it will maximize the return on the sale of this property to the school board, to the Cedar Rapids schools. This offer will preserve the legacy of the Garfield Elementary School. Isaac Newton Christian Academy has a proven track record of purchasing and preserving a historical Cedar Rapids school as we began over 30 years ago by purchasing Adams Elementary School in 1989. We've remodeled and renovated it into a thriving facility that it is today. We hope to do the same for Garfield. I have a dedicated team with me here tonight to discuss any questions you may have on this offer and to address any questions. With that, I will pause to hand out our written offer.
Thank you.
Before I have a follow-up question for the board, I would be happy to entertain any questions that we have on our offer. And I would just restate that what you'll see in front of you is our offer for $375,000 cash. Included in our offer letter is our bank confirmation of funds. Are there any questions on the offer?
As per my introductory remarks, we are not able to interact with public comment. Thank you.
So then with that, I would just remind the board of the legislation that has been referred to tonight that does read that Board of Directors of School Districts shall not enter into any agreement that prohibits the sale of real property to an educational institution. If the Board of Directors of a school district offers to sell real property that contains a building, an educational institution, and an educational institution offers to purchase such real property for a purchase price that represents the highest bid, the Board of Directors of the school district receive for the real property. Then the Board of Directors shall sell the property to the educational institution for such purchase price. And that is the legislation that has been referred to this evening. Thank you for your time and consideration. We look forward to working with you to continuing the legacy of Garfield Elementary as a educational facility. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all our speakers.
Thank you to all of our speakers tonight. The sale of the piece of property at 1201 Maplewood Drive Northeast, also known as Garfield, public hearing is officially closed. Now we will be moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items a director would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. The next item on our agenda is a presentation on the Pebble. Chad, wherever you are, the floor is yours. There you are.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me present to you guys tonight about the Pebble and the upcoming Pebble votes. Before we begin, it's probably important for us to understand a little bit about the school finance and the different buckets of money that we use to finance our facilities. Obviously, we have the general fund, which we often consider the human fund for salaries, benefits, curriculum items, classroom items that support our kids and our teachers' education. The save bucket is that one cent option sale tax bucket that we use to help support our facilities. That's the money that when you go out and buy a shirt or a pair of shoes or anything in the community, you're getting taxed a little bit of extra money. That goes to the state and then that's given to us through an allocation that we can use on facilities and also new buildings. Whoops, can you go back? Thank you. So then we also have the GeoBond buckets or the GO bucket. That's the GeoBond that we would want to go out and ask for support in November of 2025. That also is the money that would go towards our facilities. And then obviously, the last bucket is our Pebble bucket, our physical plant and equipment levy. We use this bucket to make sure that we keep our children's warm, safe, and dry throughout our school year. This is our maintenance fund. So the physical plant and equipment levy can be used for many different things. As you can see, purchase and improve grounds, construction of schoolhouses or buildings, additions to schoolhouses, rental of facilities, payments to the city, demolition, cleanup, and other costs incurred within two years of a natural disaster. We use Pebble a lot during the derecho. So those are the things that we can use the Pebble fund for. Go ahead. Over the last 10 years, we have used Pebble through the Pebble promise that we had through the last 10 years. This shows you the amount of money that we have spent over the last 10 years. The blue line being the revenue, the red line being the expenditures. The green is the difference in that year. So over the last 10 years, we have utilized our Pebble funds to help support the maintenance of our buildings. Go ahead. The revenue over the last 10 years is just a little bit over our expenses, but we did have a difference there. And the difference is carried over so that we can make sure that we have a little bit extra in our funds in case something happens, like what happened with Harding and Taff with the domes. We were able to tap into that money and support the renovations of those domes with that extra money that we had. Go ahead. This is the breakout of our Pebble funds over the last 10 years by building. You can see, starting with Arthur in alphabetical order, you can see, again, the blue line is what we had scheduled for the last 10 years of Pebble spending. The red line is what we actually spent on those buildings over the last 10 years. There's a couple of things that you should see here that we can point out. Erskine has a large blue line of what we had scheduled to spend. We were going to put in a major overhaul to the HVAC system there. We decided to hold off on that based on the plan for the elementary plan. And we needed to make sure we didn't spend extra money on something that was going to be replaced. Franklin has a larger line of spending there than what was scheduled. But once we got into Franklin, we started to replace the windows and the doors at Franklin, we decided to make sure they were all replaced in the proper way. So we ended up spending some more Pebble money at Franklin to replace all the windows and doors and other items there. Grant, we have made a significant investment in Grant, knowing that that's a school that we would like to keep in our inventory and renovates as we go through the next 10 years and looking at our bond plan as we move forward. So the next slide will show you kind of the projects that we had laid out and what we had scheduled for and spent on the projects throughout the district. Asbestos removal, ADA improvements, locker replacements. That's something that's going on right now over at Kingston Stadium, the ADA improvements in the locker room there. Concrete repairs and replacements, that's going on in Jefferson High School right now. Parking lots and playgrounds. The last line there that you see is the tallest line is the work order repairs. Those are the items that come into our office that are just things that need to happen to our buildings to keep them up. So you can see that line is the highest of all the lines because we have a lot of things that we need to keep our buildings up to grade to make sure our kids are warm, safe, and dry. So as those repairs come into our office, we go out and we perform those repairs. And that's one of our largest costs for the Pebble over the last 10 years. The next slide just talks a little bit about the fact that over the last 10 years, we had a plan of what we wanted to perform and to accomplish. And we were able to do that at all of our buildings. It's hard to see these small signs, but those are each of the high schools or each of the schools of the 32 schools in our district and the amount of money we spent at each of those buildings over the last 10 years. So looking forward, the next slide, we estimate over the next 10 years, moving forward, if Pebble was to be renewed in September, we would estimate about $145 million to come into the district. We dedicate about $19 million of debt dollars to Transportation Department for our vehicle upgrades and providing vehicles, vans, buses to transport our students. We have about $86 million that we have dedicated to the projects over the next 10 years. And then we are going to dedicate about $30 million to college and career readiness programming at our high schools. And that's a total of about $135 million. So you can see that we're also allowing for that carryover amount so that we have funds there if we need to for anything that would creep up. This is the projects as we have it laid out for the next 10 years in our plan. It follows the same pattern as what we showed that we spent in the previous 10 years. We know we're going to have some kitchen work orders or some tree assessments and landscape issues or custodial equipment that needs to be purchased. So that again is the plan that we have laid out for the next 10 years. We also have the work order repairs. We know that we have a certain amount of money that we had to set aside for those work order repairs. Go ahead. Just to give you a perspective of our tax rates over the last 25 years in the district, starting in fiscal year 2001, moving through fiscal year 2025, we're pretty steady with our tax rates. Next year, starting in July 1st, our tax rate will be at $13.90 per $1,000 of assessed value. That is actually going to go down with rollbacks at the state. We are going to be able to see a reduction in property taxes for our homeowners. The next slide shows you a comparison slide compared Cedar Rapids District to other districts in Lynn County. These are all the schools in Lynn County, all the school districts in Lynn County, starting with Northland here in Springville and going through there. You can see Cedar Rapids in the middle is the lowest tax rate at $13.90. Marion College Community and Linmar are quite a bit higher than we are at this time. So for the last 50 years, the Cedar Rapids Community School District has supported Pebble. We have had Pebble in our system for the last 50 years. On September 10th, there will be a vote to renew Pebble. It would be a non-tax increase renewal, and that's what you're voting on. The tax impact will be that it will not be a raise in taxes. It will just be a renewal. And actually, even if Pebble was to be renewed, we would see a tax decrease with the rollbacks at the state. So that's what I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Chad. Do we have questions from the board and comments?
Chad, there's a slide, the Pebble Promise. And you highlighted some of the projects. Just want to confirm, are those, those are available for the public? They've already been made public? And if people were interested in hearing about some of these projects, reading more, where would they go to find that?
They would go to our district website and go to the facility site. And there would be a link there for them to be able to get into all the Pebble information there.
And they're all listed?
Yep.
Yep. Do you, maybe a follow-up question. Any of the things that you're looking for in the next 10 years, is that also documented or is just the past 10 years?
Yep, the plan itself will be posted. It is not since we were having this meeting tonight, but after this meeting, it will be posted on that site as well.
Great.
Other questions, comments? I do just want to reiterate that a couple graphs there. The first one about our tax rate compared to other districts in the county. We have the lowest tax rate in the county, which I think we are all very proud of, that we can deliver a high-quality education and be very resourceful of our finances. The second thing, just to reiterate and make sure everyone understands, is that if we renew the Pebble, it does not create a tax increase. It just keeps your taxes as they are. So this is not a tax increase. So thank you, Chad. Our next agenda item is approval of the resolution to close out the Child Care Fund. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution to close out the Child Care Fund?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. The next item on our agenda is the approval of a resolution to schedule a public hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $30 million school infrastructure sale services, use tax revenue bonds, one or more series. Do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman. President Garlock.
Aye. Our next item is the approval of a resolution of the engagement letter with Piper Sadler and Company. Do we have a motion to approve the resolution of the engagement letter with Piper Sadler and Company?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. Next, we have the approval of the resolution for an election for Pebble on September 10th, 2024. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman. Director Roundtree.
Aye.
Director Tominski.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. Now we will hear again from Chad Schmucker, Chad Shoemaker, sorry. Chad, can you take the mic?
Thank you for letting me talk to you guys tonight. I very appreciate it. It's been an honor serving as the Director of Operations since October. Since assuming my role in October, we've made a significant progress in our efforts to create future-ready facilities. We will proudly open the Trailside facility in just over a month, making it an important milestone for our organization. The establishment of Trailside has enabled combining the Arthur and Garfield staff into one team, resulting in a more streamlined and efficient operation. Additionally, this merger has allowed us to optimize our resources and reduce overhead costs by rightsizing our district. When we look at the cost per square foot to operate Garfield and Arthur combined, we spend approximately $1.75 per square foot. When we compare that to one of our new buildings, and we wanted to compare it to West Willow just because that's the one that's been established for the longest, we're spending about $1.21 per square foot in that building. So that's a savings of about 53 cents per square foot. In addition to the reduction in costs, we also see a benefit in overall air quality and day-to-day environmental conditions, which results in improving learning environments. When we consider the sale of Garfield and Arthur, we consider three things. One, to preserve the historical nature of those buildings. Two, to make sure that the programming or Two, to make sure that the programming or benefits would be given back to the Cedar Rapids Community at large. And three, the benefits that could be given to the Cedar Rapids Community School District. We feel that those sales are checking all three boxes. We also feel that we diligently follow all legal and regulatory requirements in collaboration with our real estate agent and legal counsel to ensure compliance. Once again, thank you for letting me speak to you tonight and for your support and guidance throughout this process.
Thank you, Chad. We now have some comments from Carla, our CFO.
Good evening, Board members. As a district, we propose selling both buildings at an amount below the assessed value. For Arthur, this means a sale price of $130,000 for the property. For Garfield, this means a sale price of $160,000. The $160,000 does not include the second parcel of land that the district owns at the Garfield site. CRCSD will retain ownership of that. The second section of the real estate purchase agreement for Arthur with the Eastern Iowa Arts Academy is a binding agreement to deliver educational programming for the next 10 years for no fee. This has at a minimum a value of $270,000 over a 10-year period. Regarding Garfield, within the purchase agreement, the delivery of a binding agreement to dedicate two apartments within the property for district use. The agreement will require the buyer to lease one or both apartments to an employee of the seller designated by the seller or to another person affiliated with the seller, such as a student/teacher, designated by the seller for no rent or fees, providing the tenant will be responsible for payment of his or her own utilities. This has a cash value that is greater than the combined assessed value of that building. Additionally, there's a 2080 agreement with the buyer to allow our Building Trades Class to work on the renovations of the building for a minimum of one year or two semesters. It is crucial to address the financial impact of student enrollment for our district. In the fall of 2023, 843 CRCSD students are receiving ESAs, representing a diversion of $6.5 million from our district's budget. On October 2023 count, in total, 2,006 CRCSD students attended non-publics, costing the district over $15 million. Additionally, we lose 1,672.7 students due to open enrollment, totaling just over $13 million. This emphasizes the vital importance of our strategic anchor to increase enrollment for the prosperity of our district and the need to stabilize it. This year, an increase of 42.6 students resulted in additional funding of $333,382, enabling the district not to have to make cuts. This highlights the critical role of enrollment in maintaining the financial stability of our district. The funds we get from student enrollment are allocated to our general fund. Our general fund is what is used to pay for staff salaries and benefits. It is worth noting that losing a kindergartner in the 2425 school year who never returns to the district diverts $122,224 from our district over the 13-year school span of that student, an amount that could significantly impact us when multiplied by hundreds of students. Last year, a loss of $1.5 million from our general fund was attributed to the 196 students choosing Isaac Newton Christian Academy. Considering the potential for Garfield to double their student count, our financial losses could also double. It is not a sound business decision to sell these properties to organizations that will affect the overall financial health of our district. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Carla, for outlining the financial implications. Next, we have some words from our Superintendent, Dr. Grover.
Thank you so much, President Garlock and Board of Directors. First, I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Arthur and Garfield both are Cedar Rapids Community School Districts. They are here with us. They are part of our resources that we have available to us in order for us to best serve our students, their families, as well as our staff, and as we work towards fulfilling the strategic plan that was approved by the Board of Education. So as we think about that, Carla's insightful breakdown of enrollment statistics is a glimpse of our current reality. This shows the district's impact as it relates to declining enrollment. And I know that that was one of the areas that was talked to me about as I entered the school district. Not only does declining enrollment mean that our students, we do not have our students here, it also means that when we lose students, we are at risk of losing resources and support staff and as well as teaching staff. We were very honored this year that we did not have to make cuts for our teachers, and that was because we saw an increase in enrollment. As we talk about the sale of Arthur and Garfield, the decision to sell through a partnership process based on the assessed value, it was us working towards our strategic plan goals. As Carla outlines, the 10-year partnerships, they are equal or greater than the value than the remaining assessed value, making this an opportunity for us to, number one, have a decision already made that we know what's happening with our buildings within our community, so allowing us to be good neighbors. We are preserving the historical buildings, which we know that that has come to our attention as something that we should consider, and so we were very thoughtful with that. And also introducing educational programming and reducing overhead cost. You know, most recently, this may seem like it's related, not related, but I think it's things that we have to think about as an organization when we are looking at how do we ensure that Cedar Rapids Community School District is the leading choice for our families? And we must think about innovative solutions that gives our families one more reason to say yes to Cedar Rapids Community School District. We have worked with our non-public and private schools here for years, and we continue, we will continue to look for partnerships that make sense to us. But most recently, the Gazette, they spotlighted three charter schools that will be coming to our school community. This is a new territory for us, which means that we must position ourselves to offer viable choices, options, experiences, innovative solutions to our students and families. And so with the sale, I do know that we want to make sure that we're good neighbors and that we are a value-added. When we're talking about bringing new families, increasing our enrollment, we want to make sure that families have a place to stay as well. Recruitment and retention is another part of our strategic plan that has been a priority for the district for quite some time. And so this idea that we will have an opportunity to offer housing where we can become just as competitive as the business market, a new endeavor and an innovative solution for us to attract maybe, it may seem like it's two apartments, but our goal is to make sure that we have a qualified teacher in front of all of our students, and so to the parents of those students in those one or two classrooms, it makes a difference if we have a high-quality educator. So with that being said, as we think about this opportunity with the sales that are in front of us right now, we know that we are pursuing excellence and making sure that we're living up to our portrait of a graduate, where our students are equipped for college and career. This will give them that opportunity, that they are empowered for life and they are engaged within our community. That is the promise that we are delivering on tonight, as well as through this sale process that allows a partnership for many years to come. It means that we don't have to completely say goodbye to Arthur and Garfield just yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. I think it's important to realize that our task as the Board of Education is to address providing the best learning opportunities for our students. And I truly believe that both of these offers for these two properties achieve that goal. It is our duty to provide for our students. And I know that we have all been hearing a lot of comments from the public as we've heard here tonight, and there's a tendency to look at the dollar signs. And I think Carla outlined for us that even if we do look at the dollar signs, this is a win-win for our community and for our students. We are preserving the two buildings. We have heard previously from our community that they're very interested in making sure that our buildings stay, these buildings stay intact. So we've achieved that goal. And we are also getting something in return. We're getting 10 years of instruction from the Eastern Iowa Arts Academy. Our building and trade students are getting hands-on experience in the renovation of this historical structure. And as Dr. Grover highlighted, we're going to be able to better attract and retain staff because of these offers. So like I said, in my mind, this is a win-win. Our students will benefit. Our community will be able to see these buildings continue to exist. Other comments from the board?
Do you want comments on Arthur first?
Either?
I would comment on Arthur specifically. I was just really pleased to see that partnership come together. They've been working with this district for a long time and the excitement from their community. And then the idea, as you mentioned, the expansion of those programs over the next 10 years, I think is going to be great. So keeping that building, I think that, as Chad mentioned, historic preservation certainly is one of those three things that he mentioned, beyond the benefit of the community and the benefit of the district. So I was really happy to see that come together. And as you mentioned, I mean, the dollar amount on the sale price, if that's all you're focused on, peers low, but the value of that programming to our students and just the opportunity for them to expand and to be able to do more in this entire community is fantastic. I think many people know I've got two kids in the district, and a lot of their friends have actually participated in those programs. So I think I probably focus more on their music programs. I think they just had a nice festival just this past weekend, I think is when it happened. It's just a celebration of youth and the arts. So if you're out in the community, I would definitely encourage you to take a look at some of the programming that they're putting out, because I just think it is a great representation of the talent that's here in this town. And seeing folks that want to participate in that has been great.
Thank you. Other comments?
I would like to say as a board, our uncompromising commitment to public education is the cornerstone of the work. We have prioritized maintaining partnerships with the buyers, ensuring the sale of Garfield and Arthur. I think it's important to note, selling to another educational institution would redirect our taxpayer dollars away from public education. In our decision-making process, we remain steadfast in our commitment to prioritize the needs of our students and our community.
Thank you.
I would just say I really appreciate the partnerships, and that's something I'm really excited about. Eastern Iowa Arts Academy, I've watched them grow and do amazing things in our community. So the fact that we can contribute to that and also partner with them is so wonderful. I'm super excited. As far as Garfield goes, I'm really excited. Like Dr. Grover said, that building belongs to CRCSD, okay? And so it's going to stay in its original state as far as the historic aesthetic. I love that. And also still partnering with our community, and also it will add to our district. It's going to give back to our district. And so I'm excited about that. I agree with what has been said so far. Thank you.
Any other comments? Director Newman on Zoom, anything you want to add?
I would just echo what's been said so far. And I'm sorry if you can't hear me very well. I don't have much of a voice tonight. But I just, I look at the back of our placards where that ask how this asks how our actions will benefit our students. And I think our actions tonight absolutely benefit our students and our community, and I couldn't be prouder of the partnerships and the innovation that's come from that. Thank you.
Comment on Garfield too, if you want to do that now?
Sure, yeah, if you want to comment on Garfield.
There's a few things in that proposal that I was very excited to see. We had all traveled down to a conference, and one of the sessions that was well-attended down there was about teacher housing, specifically in Bentonville. And I thought it was a phenomenal proposal. They were talking about how teacher salaries were not increasing at the rate that housing is increasing. Having affordable housing helps with recruitment and retention. I think it was shortly after our board meeting where I talked about that, I saw that that failed in that community. They did not actually support it. So for us to find a way to actually support housing for teachers, that is clearly a thing that these communities across the country are talking about, that you can't bring teachers in at some of the salaries that we're getting paid. We know that they are not getting paid what they should be. That's what part of the legislation was to actually increase the minimum salaries for teachers. So for us to be able to have market-rate apartments that are actually going to be dedicated to our teachers, I think is great. I saw, I heard from Carla that update that it's expanded to other staff, but it's up to our discretion on who gets to utilize those spaces. And I can't tell you how excited I am that there's students that are going to be involved with that process. We heard so much about the student-built houses. What an amazing opportunity that is for our kids. So this board has been talking, this whole district has been talking about expanding career and technical education. So this is a great way to do that. Construction, I think, was at the top of that list. So getting these kids exposed to projects like that, and quite honestly, working with an established developer, what a great opportunity that is. I think about in different fields, if you can work with people that are at the top of their craft, I mean, that is just an exceptional opportunity. So I think I would leave it at that. And I think maybe the last piece is that, you know, I heard Carla articulate, I think that there was maybe some miscommunication that was going on about all of the parcels. So there is a significant amount of land, which is not included. So I appreciate Carla for that clarification, because I know that was something that was getting spread, that all of that land was going along. So appreciate the work that everybody has done to this point to get us here.
And I also like the fact too, that maintaining the buildings and the work that will be done, and the skill set for our students with our CTE coming in, I just think it's really a great partnership for the community, and it will impact our students' lives. And that's what we're all about too, is making a difference in their lives. And this is one of the steps as we move forward.
I think it's such a, it's such a unique opportunity for our students to be involved in historical preservation. How many communities have that option available to their kids? It's very exciting, so.
Yeah, I honestly feel like this is a responsible decision, yes, for our district.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is voting to approve the sale of the property at 2630 B Avenue Northeast, also known as Arthur. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is voting to approve the property sale at 2101 Maplewood Drive Northeast, also known as Garfield. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Is there a motion for the Board of Education to meet in closed session on Monday, June 24th, 2024, to evaluate professional competency as provided by Iowa Code Section 2151I?
I move the Board of Education hold a closed session on Monday, June 24th, 2024, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to those individuals' reputation, and that the individual requests a closed session as provided in Section 2151I of the Iowa Code.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Humbles?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Roundtree?
Aye.
I now call the Board of Education special meeting back into open session at 7:32 PM. Our final item tonight is to vote on the approval of the superintendent's contract. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that the board president be authorized to enter into a three-year contract with the identified candidate as superintendent of the Cedar Rapids Community School District.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Rontree.
Aye.
Director Kaminsky.
Aye.
Director Humbles.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
President Garlock.
Aye. With no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We stand in adjournment at 7:33.